I call this Temple Terrace City Council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody and remind you to turn off for silence or electronic devices. Please stand for a pledge allegiance to the flag and an invocation by Councilmember Ross.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon our community. We ask you to look over us as we conduct our business for the city and our citizens. Guide us to serve our residents with cooperation, integrity, and transparency. Help us to work together to find common ground through issues that face our amazing city. Help us recognize opportunities and work through difficulties as we conduct our city business. We ask that you watch over our military and first responders who work courageously to defend our freedoms. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you. As a reminder, if anyone wants to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, there are forms in the back of the room to the right, my right side. Please fill them out and turn them into the city clerk all the way to the left. The first order of business is item one, recognitions, proclamations, presentation and board appointments. The first one, I will read a proclamation and present it to Jeannie Barlow, Greg Polly, and Lori Hayes for City Government Week. Okay, whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizen and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Florida City Government Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives, and whereas this week, October 23rd to 29th, 2017, offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence its branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information, and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to convey all the citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, I, Robert Boss, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Vice Mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim as follows: That the City of Temple Terrace does encourage all citizens, city government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that Florida City Government Week, October 23rd to 29th, 2017, is recognized and celebrated accordingly; that the City of Temple Terrace does encourage educational partnerships between the city government; and that the City of Temple Terrace does support and encourage all city governments to actively promote and sponsor the week, October 23rd to 29th, 2017, as Florida City Government Week.
Good evening. We just wanted to give you a little insight into how we're planning on celebrating National Government Week. It's going to be a three-part program done in conjunction with Florida College. The first part will commence next week, and we're going to use both our social media outlets and the website to highlight the work of each of the departments, to educate both the public as to the workings of each of those departments and sort of put a face on them, a face of government, as well as to familiarize the students with those works, because the next week, we will be meeting with them, and they'll be choosing, a select group of students will be choosing a department head to shadow in a subsequent meeting, which is going to culminate on November 16th and having a mock city council meeting, where they will pick an actual issue with the city and discuss it. You all are invited to attend that, and then afterwards, we'll have a lunch for the students, and you can do some networking and talk to them about their experiences. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could add just a couple of things. This is something that I've done in a previous life. It is a great way to engage students, to learn a little bit about government, what we do. If you start talking to students, you get very surprised that they have no idea what we do, and certainly some of the issues that we have to deal with on a weekly basis. Ms. Barlow is also instrumental in helping put some of this together, and she's pretty instrumental in kind of organizing a lot of this. I sent her out of the room to go do something for me, but I don't want her to go unrecognized, so. We do encourage, we would encourage council to kind of join in and become part of this. This is a fun exercise that we can have some good time and also teach the students. We've talked to Dr. Payne over at Florida Ecology. He is excited to be involved with this, and he certainly encouraged us to move forward with it. So, we look forward to the events that would come up on the 16th, and I know our directors are tuned in to joining in and participating, but if we can get council to participate, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is item B. The Rotary Club is going to present a, make a presentation to Chief Albano in support of the Boys and Girls Clubs. I'd like to welcome their president, Rich Downs, and I guess Chief Albano.
Good evening. Prior to my comments, on behalf of the Rotary Club of Temple Terrace, I'd like to take this opportunity, as a citizen of Temple Terrace, to thank all the city employees that have worked so hard these past weeks to clean up our city after Hurricane Arima. Shifts have worked seven days a week, all have worked long hours for days on end, and I just want to express my appreciation and pass along my thanks to them for working so hard. Rotary's motto is service above self, and as president, it is an honor to stand before you this evening, representing the members of the Rotary Club of Temple Terrace. The city has encouraged the Craft Brew Fest since its inception three years ago. Your support and sponsorship, along with the expertise of Wildsmith Marketing, have been instrumental to the success of the Craft Brew Fest. We appreciate your support and look forward to continued collaboration in an event that has brought positive attention to our city. Once again, on May 19th, 2018, in beautiful and historic Woodmont Park, through this collaborative partnership, we will host the Fourth Annual Temple Terrace Brew Fest. This year, the members of the Rotary Club of Temple Terrace have chosen to share a portion of the proceeds from our third Brew Fest as seed money for the Boys and Girls Club of Temple Terrace. I have with me this evening a check for $2,500 to present to Chief Albano, and by doing so, fulfill our annual presidential theme, Rotary Making a Difference.
Thank you.
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
Here's the real check.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you all do for us.
You're very welcome. I just want to, I just want to thank the Rotary on behalf of everyone, some of our elected officials, most, if not all, of our elected officials and those that have contributed thus far. I look forward to coming before council, your November 7th meeting, with some, some good news as far as some additional dollars. I can tell you, things are starting to steamroll. There's a considerable amount of money coming our way, I believe, and this will go a long way in helping us reach our goals, and what has been a vision for a long time is, is close to becoming a reality. So, thank you Rotary, thank you for your, your support, and most of all, thank you from the kids.
Thank you. Next, we move to item C, Greco Middle School State of the School Presentation. I'd like to invite up Principal Valerie Newton. She'll make a presentation to us on how things are going at Greco. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. And greetings from Greco Middle School, home of the Lion Cubs. It is my pleasure to make this State of the School Presentation. I'm Valerie Newton, the proud principal of Greco Middle School. We've just completed quarter one. Our current enrollment is 687 students. Here is our key performance indicator data. Key performance indicators are how we measure if students are on track to meet their graduation requirement. We track attendance, behavior, and course performance, with 90% being the target for all of those. So, for attendance, right now Greco is at 79%. 79% of our students have an attendance rate of 90% or higher. For behavior, our target again is 90%. 90% of our students have zero suspension days so far, so we're meeting that target. In addition, we've seen a 63% drop in suspension rates from this time last year. So, we're on track with behavior. For course performance, sixth grade is at 82% of students passing language, arts, and math. Those are the key performance areas that we look at. Seventh graders is 83%, and eighth graders is 82. Our target for all three grade levels again is 90%. So, we have some goals that we're putting in place to improve those areas where we're not meeting the goal. For attendance, we're using, of course, parent contact. We're doing some school-wide incentives, and we're looking into making some home visits as well. Our goal is to maintain behavior, because we're meeting that target. We want to continue to adhere to the positive behavior plan that we have in place at Greco Middle School. It involves building strong relationships, relationships with students, setting high expectations for all students, and partnering with parents, as well as the community, to decrease inappropriate behavior. We are also benefiting from having the Boys and Girls Club on our campus. It started as a summer program last summer. This summer was our second summer with them there. It has moved into them being on our campus every day. They help run our ISS program, as well as an after-school program for our students three days a week, and we're looking to increase that. And I know with Chief's help, that will happen. Our goal's in place to increase course performance. We have what's called a Cub Lunch. During lunchtime, we pull students for tutoring, and we're using our partnership with USF. They have a tutorable program that provides tutoring to some of our students, but we're always looking for additional support in the area of volunteers that would like to tutor. That's a plug for anyone that wants to tutor middle school babies. We give monthly common assessments in all of our subject areas so that we can monitor student progress, and then we design enrichment sessions outside of what they do in the regular classroom to meet the specific needs of struggling students. Finally, on October 26th, Greco will host a marketing event for fifth-grade students in our feeder schools. We're inviting fifth graders to come to the taste of Greco and visit our campus during the school day, interact with our students and teachers. In addition, parents will be invited to join their students that evening and come back for an in-depth presentation regarding what Greco has to offer. One of our goals is to encourage middle-school-age students that live in Temple Terrace to attend Greco Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I was, I was on the campus at Greco Middle School last week, and the students were so polite and so welcoming, from getting out of my car to showing me the direction, and then they were so excited about the program that they were involved in, and kudos to you and to your faculty for that program. It was, it was, it was fun to be there. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Two, minutes of the previous meeting. If the minutes are acceptable, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next is item three, persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda. Again, if you want to speak on items not listed on the agenda, there are forms in the back to fill out, please. Right now, I have two people wishing to speak. First person wishing to speak is Mr. John Kennedy. He wants to talk about police policy and enforcement. You have three minutes, please, and please state your name and address.
By now, I think everybody knows who I am, John Kennedy. I'm a citizen of Temple Terrace. I'd like to thank the city council because of the week that it is. Individually, I'll address elsewhere. My concern is, y'all know about my ongoing dispute with the police department. It continues. Still, I have addressed city council and town hall meetings half a dozen times. I've tried to address city council members outside of this venue. In doing so, I was trespassed from my publics because one of the city council members did not maintain his composure, and I was blamed for it. And so, I come to address with y'all. Now, after reviewing city council policies, I realized it was inappropriate for me to say at my last meeting what I did, and I apologize. But sometimes my mouth overloads my butt, not too often, but occasionally, and I apologize. Now, my concern is with the police department. I was told when this began by the chief of police that I set policy, Mr. Kennedy, not you. Okay, that's fine. If you set policy, you're responsible for your police officers. Now, this ongoing dispute with your police officers is basically harassment. I've read to you the letter that my attorney sent, and I started thinking, but why is this going on? What is this dispute? What have I done? I've gotten two DUIs in Temple Terrace over the past 12 years. I apologized for each one of them. I served, did whatever I were all requirements. I went to the chief and I apologized. But when I tried to address with chief one-on-one, basically fill out a citizen's complaint form, in the old days, we could sit down and discuss things, resolve issues without putting it in writing. So, after thinking about it, I looked for something in writing. This is what I found. And I'm going to give it to y'all. Now, this is our chief of police. And evidently, his intelligence squad is not up to date on the citizens of Temple Terrace. And if they are, there's a reason why Temple Terrace is known as Temple Terrorism. Okay, the influx of the Muslim Brotherhood. And sitting down for lunch with the chief is outrageous. My time is up. I apologize for overextending my welcome.
Thank you, sir. Next person wishing to speak is... Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Next person, two people that would like to speak, council, regarding King High School Homecoming, is, hopefully I get the names pronounced correctly, Sakina Johar and Cameron Williams. Please state your names and address, and you have three minutes to address council, please.
Good evening. My name is Sakina Johar, and I'm part of the King High School Student Government. As many of you know, we'll be hosting our Third Annual Homecoming Parade in Temple Terrace. It's going to follow the route around the first hole of the Temple Terrace Golf Course, and we'd like to invite everybody on council and in Temple Terrace to come participate in the music and the food and the clubs that are participating in the parade. That's all. Thank you.
What are the dates and time, please?
Tomorrow, it will start at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Hopefully, you'll have less rain than last year. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other persons wishing to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business. Communications and petitions, none. Consent agenda, none. Public hearing ordinances and resolutions. We have quite a few this evening. First is item 6A, which is a resolution approving a contract with the state of Florida for expenditure of funds. Legion Services Carl Langefeld will explain.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Boss, members of council, City Manager Charles Stevenson. What I bring for you tonight is a request for approval of a, the execution of a contract between the city and the state of Florida for the expenditure of $250,000 allocation that was provided to the city from the state of Florida for the construction of the Buddy baseball fields that will be built on the family complex property. This is the second, actually the first part of the funding, the total $500,000 funding that we have for the construction of these fields. The second part of that funding was previously approved by city council, which was a match provided to the city from Hillsborough County. So, the execution of this contract between the city and the state will finalize all of the funding for this project and allow the, the project to start moving forward. I stand for any questions. Should there be any?
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussions. Does the council have any discussion on this item? If acceptable, I entertain a motion approving the contract with the state of Florida for the expenditure of $250,000 budget allocation for construction of two Buddy baseball fields.
Move to approve the resolution as described.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is approved, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Play ball. And we're going to, item B, resolution approving amendment to an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County recognizing additional contractor licensing categories. Community Development Director Amir Anisi will explain.
Good evening. I'm Amir Anisi, Community Development Director. In March of 1999, as amendment in 2007, City of Temple Terrace and Hillsborough County entered to, into an interlocal agreement to establish our participatory with Board of Adjustment, Appeal, and Examiner, and for the purpose of providing uniform system for the certification and licensing of a contractor. The interlocal agreement contained Appendix A, which lists contractor categories that are subject to review by the Board of Adjustment, Appeal, and Examiner and licensure by county. After reviewing the appendix, it has been discovered the several categories were identified for which license have been issued as far as 1993 were not identified in Appendix A. The attached amendment into the interlocal agreement between the city and county will add the contractor license category for work involving the following: specialty garage door installation, residential sign contractor, electrical signs, residential low, electrical low voltage, residential electrical, registered electrical alarm system one and two, registered glass and glazing, specialty siding, window and door installer, registered solar, registered underground utility, and specialty hurricane shatter contractor. So, basically, I meant in the appendix, A, Appendix A, to adding this following contractor to be able to update the license.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the public on this? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, council discussion. Any discussion amongst council? Okay, if acceptable, I entertain a motion approving amendment to the interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County to recognize additional contractor licensing categories as identified by Hillsborough County. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you. Item C, resolution creating the Charter Review Committee. The city clerk will explain that this is a procedural item, so turn it over to the city clerk.
So, this is basically a procedural item, and the resolution covers how the members were selected, which is each council member selected a member to be on the Charter Review Committee, and it also goes over what their scope of duties, procedures, and timeframe for submitting a report with recommendations for items that could be placed on the November 2018 ballot.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this? Seeing none. Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. If acceptable, I'll entertain a motion approving the Charter Review Committee resolution.
Move to approve the resolution as described.
There is a motion to approve. Is there a second? The motion is second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Moving on to item D. Item D is a public hearing and final reading of an ordinance adopting fiscal year 2017, 2018 tax levy. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and then I'll turn it over to the city attorney for explanation of this item.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This is a procedural item that is being brought for a third public hearing due to the notice requirements under Section 166-041 of the Florida statutes. Under the city's charter, the city adopts its budget and its tax levy via ordinance. Florida statutes that relate to tax levies, excuse me, the levies and the budgets provides that they can be adopted by resolution or ordinance. As a result of the city doing it through its charter via an ordinance, both 200.065 and 166-041 need to be satisfied. Prior to the hearing held on September 19th, the notice required by 166-041 was not published. It has since been published, so we're here today on a third public hearing on the budget and tax levy. Because we, we do this via ordinance, we have to satisfy both statutes, as I just indicated. I did some research on this, spoke with the Florida League of Cities. We determined that an argument could be made that the requirements of Section 200.065 are more stringent and exceed the notice requirements of Section 166-041. But in an abundance of caution, we were going forward with a third public hearing to make sure that the statutory requirements of under 166-041 are in fact followed. So, with that being said, as you've, we've gone through this before, and to, to save time and to try to make sure that we've got everything covered, I'll read for you language that needs to be provided, that the recommended property tax millage rate for the City of Temple Terrace is 6.955 mils per $1,000 of assessed value. This recommended property tax millage rate is 0.2494 mils or 3.72% higher than the statutory rollback rate of 6.7056 mils. And the first issue for discussion during the hearing on these ordinances is the percentage of increase in millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget and the purposes for which the millage is being increased. And so, with that being said, I'll turn it over for explanation by staff.
If I can provide a, a budget summary for 2017, 2018 budget. The proposed 2017, 2018 budget reflects the following. It's a one-quarter of one mil decrease in the adleorm rate to 6.955 mils from the current 7.205. There is 0% increase in water and sewer user fees. There is a 0% increase in commercial sanitation rates. There is a 0% increase in single-family residential sanitation rates. There is applied in the, the proposed budget, $856,400 in the general fund capital program. There is $1.958578, $1.958578 million in a community investment tax expenditures to replace public safety vehicles and equipment, public works vehicles and equipment, and to refurbish public facilities and park facilities. There is in the proposed budget, $2,851, eight, 2,000, 2,851... There is in the proposed budget, $2,851, eight, 200, 2,000, 851 and $500 in utility system improvements and vehicle replacements. There is $475,831 in sanitation vehicle replacements and equipment. And there is 1.165000, $1,165,000 in street and sidewalk bike trails and drainage improvements. The budget also adds 4.5 new full-time equivalent positions to the payroll, one being one firefighter, two police officers, one code enforcement administrative assistant and a half full-time employee to the human resource department. The budget also continues to support the city employees' health insurance without an increase to the employees or the city. It also includes a 3% salary increase for general employees and recognizes the contractual obligations for the fire and police union. It also covers the assumed debt so far with the Temple Terrace Golf Country Club annual debt payment of $263,272. It also provides a payment to service the debt periodically for the outstanding $24 million redevelopment note. Those are the highlights of the budget and we stand with the resolution. I'm sorry, the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm going to open this up. Any comment from the public on both the millage rate and the city's budget? Seeing no comments, I'll turn it over to council member questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the city clerk to read the title of the tax levy ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida adopting a millage rate of 6.955 mils for fiscal year 2017-18, said millage rate being 0.2494 mils or 3.72% more than the rollback rate of 6.7056 mils, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. I'll second it. Motion and a second. It's the city attorney.
And then before we close the public hearing, we'll have the reading on the, on the next ordinance as well.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to move on to item E, which is a continuation of the public hearing and final readings of an ordinance adopting millage rate, operating budget and capital improvement schedule. I'll ask the city clerk to read the title of the budget ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida adopting the final operating budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017 and ending September 30th, 2018 and the capital improvement budget. Given notice of the public hearings thereon, authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager and/or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund, authorizing the city manager or the finance director upon receipt of a donor, donation or grant to appropriate said funds in the expenditure line item of the program as requested by the donor-granter, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to with.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Motion is there a second? Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
I know that we talked about this budget until we can all repeat the numbers, but I just, and I intend to vote to pass this budget, absolutely. But I know we had many unanswered questions throughout the process and so.
They can't hear you. I don't think your microphone's on.
I'm sorry. It's bad enough that I can hardly talk. I don't turn my microphone on. I apologize. I intend to vote to pass this budget, obviously, but my, because we had so many questions that we asked during the process, I would like to ask at this time that, I would like a year-end closing statement as soon as possible so we can see how close we actually were when we were to the actuals and monies moved forward and also that the CAFR findings have been corrected. I know I asked for that the last meeting. I just want to put it into a formal request, so I'd like to ask for those two things. So year-end closing statement and a report on the CAFR findings and a checklist of those things that we had been requested to strengthen. That make sense? Yeah, thank you.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Councilman Chalora.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify. I actually asked the city manager about this item today. He said this is the way it's always been. I recall from time to time when there is transfers of monies from one account to another that it comes to the council for action or approval. And on this documentation, it states authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions as are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs, authorizing the city manager or the finance director to transfer monies among the departments and programs within any fund. And I, if we're going to be moving, if we've allocated monies to a certain department and that's changing, I'd like the council to be made aware of it, even if they have the authority, just so we know what's, what's going on. It may be unrelated, but in the past, when there has been housekeeping, it does come to account, to the council to reconcile the, the budget or whatever is happening, just so we're all on the same page and we're on the loop. That's all I ask for transparency on that.
Thank you.
So I'm not voting against, I just want to make sure that we're not changing anything, that when something is changing from one account to another, it is brought to us either for a vote or for, I mean, I know the city manager has discretion of $25,000, but I also know from time to time, we do approval of the council reconciling a line item if monies are transferred from one place to the other, just so we're all on the same page.
I think that, if I remember right, the charter requires that, I believe, if it's over a certain threshold that we have to, inter-account transfers, I think, doesn't the charter require that?
Even if, even if a purchase is made, even if it's in the budget, it requires.
Well, over a certain amount, but I think the inter-fund transfers require approval too, I believe. Maybe I'm wrong.
If it does, I'm just referencing the document in front of me and if, that's all I, and the city manager, that's the way it's always been. He's not changed anything and that's fine. I just want to make sure if there's anything, you know, if it's, if it's a $20 line item, we don't need to hear about it, but if it's $25,000, we certainly would like to know what, what we've changed or what we're doing. Thank you.
We, we'll accommodate that request.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to close the public hearing. We're going to move on to item F, which is the second public hearing and second reading of an ordinance on a development order amendment to Tampa Telecom Park, DRI number 116. I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to have senior planner Michael Kokowski to go ahead and give a presentation.
Good evening. Michael Kokowski, senior planner for the Community Development Department, here to present the notice of proposed change. This is the second reading for the 13th notice of proposed change for lot 7A of the Tampa Telecom Park. Got to turn it on first. The owner is JT Enterprise 2 LLC. The location was originally identified as 1341 Telecom Parkway. However, just to provide a note, staff has signed a new address of 6901 East Fletcher Avenue with the 911 addressing. 13th amendment of the Tampa Telecom PRI includes the following. It's amending map H to add two right-in, right-out turn lanes on East Fletcher Avenue. It's amending the equivalency matrix, chipped generation rates to allow for, for office and shopping center, general retail uses. And it's also amending the signage requirements. Site A will be allowed to comply with the land development code versus the, the DRI and then the rest of lot 7A shall continue to comply with the DRI requirements for signage. This is a general location. The lot is generally between Telecom Drive and North Telecom Parkway and north of Woodruff Road. And basically east of the Hillsborough River and south of the Academy Letters Park. Community Development recommends council adopt the ordinance approving the requested notice of proposed change for Telecom Park DRI. And also just for your information, I just have the map showing the, the two circles are the proposed locations for the driveway and that's the overall view of Tampa Telecom DRI. And staff will stand for questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask for any comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, and we'll close the public hearing and we'll go on to council discussion. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none. We're going to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida amending Temple Terrace ordinance number 544 as amended by ordinance number 585, ordinance number 600, ordinance number 682, ordinance number 717, ordinance number 821, ordinance number 1001, ordinance number 1133, ordinance number 1150, ordinance number 1162, ordinance number 1187, ordinance numbers 1201 and ordinance number 1206, together constituting a development order issued pursuant to chapter 380, Florida statutes for GTE Collier 326, also known as Tampa, Tampa Telecom Park DRI, a development of regional impact, providing findings of fact, providing conclusions of law, providing specific revisions to map H, the equivalency matrix and application of signage requirements and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to with.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance. There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. The ordinance is adopted. Move on to item G, which is a transmittal public hearing and resolution approving transmittal of CPA 17-04 Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the State. I'm going to open the public hearing and Tony Lacola, principal planner for the planning commission, will make a presentation. Thank you, Ms. Lacola, welcome.
Good evening, city council, Tony Lacola, your planning commission staff. Tonight I'm here to present to you for transmittal to the Department of Economic Opportunity, Plan Amendment 17-04. It has to be submitted to DEO due to the size, it's over 10 acres in size. Just the PowerPoint up. There we go. No.
It's a PowerPoint, right?
All right. I just want to show you the maps, but if we don't need, if we don't have access to them, I can just go through the presentation without it. There we go. The map amendment is located in the northeast section of Temple Terrace along Old Morris Bridge Road, just on the east side of I-75. This is an aerial view of the subject site. You'll notice I-75 just on the, sorry, I-75 on the west side. The Tampa bypass canal is on the east side and you have Morris Bridge Road to the north. To the south of the subject site are a variety of parcels which are owned by Hillsborough County. The state of Florida and Hillsborough County have identified this particular area as an economic development area. Your city's comp plan also identifies it as an economic development area. The request is involving three parcels. It's privately initiated, a total of 26.66 acres. The request comes due to a recent annexation of that parcel, of those three parcels into the city of Temple Terrace. This is required by state law to give it a Temple Terrace land use category. It would be going from a Hillsborough County suburban mixed-use category, which typically allows for residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, research corporate park, light industrial, multipurpose and clustered uses. The requested land use would be for a Temple Terrace community mixed-use 12 land use category, which would allow for single-family, multifamily residential, agricultural, general, commercial, office, intensive commercial, light, industrial and industrial land uses. These are site photos on your screen. You can see it is a heavily wooded site along Old Morris Bridge Road. This is a photo of Old Morris Bridge Road and then on the right side of the screen are some duplexes to the north of the subject site. This is the adopted future land use map as it currently exists. The parcel is indicated with that light, light pink color. It's suburban mixed-use six, that's a Hillsborough County land use category. To the east is a natural preservation area and then on the other side of the interstate, you have Tampa Oaks and Hidden River Corporate Parks, one with a community mixed-use 12 and the other with urban mixed-use 20. This is the proposed future land use map with that changed to community mixed-use 12. So what would the impacts be for this plan amendment? As currently exists, 159 dwelling units are permitted for development on that, on those three parcels. When it comes to non-residential uses, approximately 175,000 square feet of non-residential use or about 1.16 millions, 1.16, 1,161 million square feet of non-residential use if it's part of a research or corporate park. Under the proposed Temple Terrace CMU 12 category, 319 dwelling units would be permitted up to 319 or approximately 580,000 square feet of non-residential uses. The plan amendment was sent out to various agencies and city departments for review. There were no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. However, the Hillsborough County Environmental Protection Commission did have concerns about wetlands on the property. Those will be addressed in the rezoning stage, obviously. And with that, the planning commission did find the proposed map amendment consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of your comprehensive plan and they recommend adoption. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant's representative is here and might have a few things to say, or if you have any questions for me or the representative, we're here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, are there any comments from the public? Seeing, I believe this is the applicant or his representative, so I'll go ahead and.
Hi, Clayton Brickelmeier, 1304 South DeSoto in Tampa. I feel compelled to say something now that I got teed up. I really don't have anything to add. We, we've been annexed and this is the, this is the chosen path as far as the comp plan designation and our planner is also here. We're all available for questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public regarding this?
I'd like to ask a question.
Mr. Kennedy, come forward, please. Say your name and address and you have three minutes.
Keep it short. John Kennedy, citizen of Temple Terrace. We're doubling the size of this area. You know, traffic? What we're going to do with traffic? You've been on Morris Bridge Road, two-lane road. All of a sudden, we're going to double? Okay? Now, what type of provisions are made for increased traffic? That's all I had to ask.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment from the public? Please come forward and, and give your name, please, and address. And you have three minutes.
I won't, I won't need three minutes. My name is Bill Lowheed. I live at 11404 Gibraltar Place. I was, I was kind of aware of this annexing, but this is the first time I saw the map and my question for council is solely, this particular area, I can see that one of the water bodies flows through this area. It's specifically called Cow House Creek. It flows from Hillsborough River, from around, around where Rotary Park is, all the way over to the bypass canal. My, my only question, my, my issue is we in Tampa have some plans to present at some point in the near future about opening that creek up a little bit. We've been back in there. We've gotten some help. In fact, recently, we had, we had an enormous boat pulled out of there by the, the police department, which was nice. But the real question is from an ownership perspective, are we going to be blocked from using that? Is, I mean, it's not the river, it's, it's a creek. So as you, as you look at this particular proposal and resolution, just consider that we'd like to know at some point in the future what our, our use of that creek is going to be. It's good fishing in that creek, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to council discussion. Council members, the discussion, council member Chalora.
Ask Mr. Lacola a question. I'm familiar with that area there and it's certainly a very. Familiar with that area there, and it's certainly a very, the, the next phase of development that, that's coming our way. And if you travel, or if there's any kind of hiccup on 75 Morris Bridge, it's an absolute disaster. And I know right next to that's about an 80-acre site that Hillsborough County has set aside for economic development. And between this and that, I mean, you're, you're going to have some serious traffic issues. Did anybody address that?
That, that will be mitigated at the time the development comes through for rezoning. This transportation, the water issues, the sewer issues, that will be up for discussion at that point in time.
And that, that'll be a City of Temple Terrace extending service to that site? Is that what would normally happen there?
Correct.
Okay.
I think the, we can certainly ask Mr., the applicant, I think that the arrangement going forward is that they're going to extend the utilities down there.
The ci, the City of Temple Terrace utilities will extend there?
Well, they, they would, they would do the work. We would incorporate them into our system.
And has that area ever had, it's only one way in and out, is there, what, we don't have the answer. I don't need it now, but to, to, to come out onto Morris Bridge from where those duplexes are. I know they're in construction. They actually had a temporary DOT open a little road there. When you go to Flatwoods, that's a great shortcut, and that alleviates a heck of a lot of traffic. Is there ever, FDOT probably is not too excited about that. There's a light right there, but...
Yeah, at current time, there is no plan to open up an entryway or roadway into Morris Bridge Road. All traffic will have to flow north and south along Old Morris Bridge Road.
Right.
That two-lane road I, I showed you a picture of. So at this point in time, FDOT is not allowing for any type of extension at that light into Old Morris Bridge Road.
Yeah, it's, it's a very premier, pristine location, and development will eventually go there. It's the next path of development, but the infrastructure that's there, I just don't want to be like Tampa Palms where, you know, they build and then they worry about the roads afterwards. It'd be nice to address some of that maybe ahead of time.
Understandable, and hopefully your planning staff, City of Temple Terrace planning staff, takes your comments and concerns, and, you know, considers those when the rezoning process happens.
I'm in favor of the development. I just would like to be, to, to grow smart and have the proper amenities in place so we don't get fed up like folks do when they go up Ruspy Downs, and it's a great lot of traffic.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Seeing none. If acceptable, entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving transmittal of CPA 17-04 Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the state.
Need a motion first?
No, just need a motion, yes.
I move to approve.
And a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're going to move on to items H, I, and J, which I'll read them off. H is the first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt CPA 17-01 A-3-H Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Item I is first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt CPA 17-02 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And item J is first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt CPA 1703 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. I'm going to open public hearing on Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 1701 to 1703, and Senior Planner Michael Kokowski will present all three.
Good evening. Michael Kokowski, Senior Planner, Community Development Department, here to present Comprehensive Plan Amendments 1701, 1702, and 1703. I'm just going to go through each, each case individually. Slides. Okay. All right. The First Amendment is Comprehensive Plan 1701, which is separated into A through H for map amendment. This is a voluntary annexation, the last eight parcels of the US 301 Industrial Park. The land use change is going from CMU 12 County to industrial in the city. Total is about 10.112 acres. It is a, a large-scale amendment. This is the adopt, the adoption, first adoption hearing for this case. The uses are existing industrial park, and we had no objections from the state agencies. This is just a general location of the map of the properties. Essentially, it's the internal parcels between Enterprise Cove and Venture Cove to the east of Industrial Lane. The second map amendment is also voluntary annexation. This is going from residential six in the county to residential nine in the city. It's on the west side of Davis Road and south of the Navajo Avenue. The property is 2.39 acres. There's an existing home on the property, and there was no, this was not reviewed by the state because it's under 10 acres. The third Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1703, another voluntary annexation and also a lot split. The property is located at the northeast corner of Gillette Avenue and River Hills Drive. The land use is going from REZ Residential Six in the county to Residential Nine in the city. It's 0.35 acres, and it's currently a vacant lot, and it's proposed for a new single-family home. This was not reviewed by the state. Community Development recommends approval of the separate ordinances for CPA 1701, O2, and O3. Planning Commission found the request consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. State had no objections to CPA 1701, which is a considered large-scale amendment and required state review, and the others did not require, the other two did not require state review. The second hearing for City Council for second public hearing and second reading is scheduled for November 7th, and staff will stand for questions.
Thank you. Do you ask council if they have any questions?
I just have one comment. I know, I got an email from a resident who lives on Elm, Elmdale, which is directly across from...
Across, yeah, across from Davis.
And does that open that street now to requesting? He's the, he's actually the first house, so he may now petition to be annexed into the city because of his location?
Staff has had some conversations with some other property owners in the, other property owners in the area that have asked about annexing to the city. There's one of the court lots on Elmdale was one of, one person asked about, inquired about annexing, possibility of annexing, and they, they would be able to do that at, yeah, at this time, since they are, they would be contiguous. Yes. Well, right now, it's already annexed in the city, so technically, they could annex, they could annex now. Right now, we're just, we are just annex, right now, what we're doing today is we're signing the land use.
Yes, I understand.
And then later, we'll be signing, sending, but this property is already annexed.
Thank you.
Any other council, questions from council? Are there any comments from, or questions from the public for all three proposed amendments? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the title of ordinance approving CPA 17-01 A-3-H.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the imagined 2040 City of Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for eight parcels of property located at 8801 Enterprise Cove, 7703 Industrial Lane, 8802, which is a building, 8802 Parking, 8804, 8806, 8808, and 8812 Venture Cove, which in total consists of approximately 10.12 acres, as more particularly described in Section 2 below, by changing the future land use designation on said properties from Hillsborough County Community Mixed Use 12 to City of Temple Terrace Industrial CPA 17-01 A-3-H, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
If it's acceptable, I want, entertain a motion to approve ordinance.
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second on CPA 17-01 First Reading. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance approving CPA 17-02.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the imagined 2040 City of Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for a parcel of land located west of Davis Road, approximately 235 feet south of Navajo Avenue at 10026 Davis Road, consisting of approximately 2.39 acres, as more particularly described in Section 2 below, by changing the future land use designation on said property from Hillsborough County Residential Six to City of Temple Terrace Residential Nine for CPA 17-02, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
There is a motion, and I'll entertain, if it's acceptable, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance approving Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 17-02 on the first reading.
Move to approve ordinance to adopt CPA 17-02.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I ask the city clerk to read the title of ordinance approving CPA 17-03.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, amending the imagined 2040 City of Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for a parcel of land located at the northeast corner of Gillette Avenue and River Hills Drive at 12045 River Hills Drive, consisting of approximately 0.35 acres, as more particularly described in Section 2 below, by changing the future land use designation from Hillsborough County Residential Six to City of Temple Terrace Residential Nine CPA 17-03, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with.
Thank you. If acceptable, entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving Comprehensive Plan Amendment CPA 17-03 on the first reading.
Move to approve first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt CPA 1703.
And I second it. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. All three ordinances will appear for a public hearing and second and final reading on Tuesday, November 7, 2017. We're going to go through items K, L, M, N, and O next, and this will be a first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP 17-02 rezoning for US Industrial Park, 301 Industrial Park. Item L, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP 17-03 rezoning related to CPA 17-02 for 1,001,0026 Davis Road. Item M, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP 17-04 rezoning related to CPA 17-03 for 12045 River Hills Drive. Item N, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP 17-05 rezoning for 7749 Temple Terrace Highway. And item O, first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt RZP 17-06 rezoning for Tico County and City Parcels. I'm now going to open up the public hearing on two, on ordinances to adopt RZP 17-02 to 17-06. Public hearing is, is open. I'm going to ask the city council to make disclosure of communications with applicants or the public regarding these rezoning petitions. I'll start at my left, Councilmember Chalora.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Senior Planner Michael Kokowski. He will present all five rezoning petitions.
Good evening. Michael Kokowski, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department, here to present the first public hearing and reading of CPA, rezoning 1702, 1703, 1704, 1705, and 1706. The, the first one is RZP 1710, 1702. This is the US 301 Industrial Park. We're essentially, we are rezoning the entire industrial, the industrial park, except for 88, 8803 Enterprise Cove, which does not have, which is not part of the utility agreement, and was not annexed, so that, that parcel is staying in the county. The rest of the parcels are being changed from CMU 12 in the county to, well, the land use is CMU 12 in the county, and the land use is industrial in the city. The zoning is being changed from Manufacturing and Industrial Plan Development One in the county to Light Industrial. Total acreage is about 86 acres, and the location is basically west of US 301 and north of Harney Canal. The next rezoning is 1703. This is 1026 Davis Road. The zoning is going from residential, single-family conventional six, and agricultural, single-family conventional in the city, in dash one in the county, to R7 in the city. The acreage is about 2.39 acres. Current use is a single-family home, and it's also related to Comprehensive Plan 170, 1702. This property is west of Davis Road, south of Navajo Avenue, and east of the Tico easement that runs along the western boundary. Rezoning 1704, this is 1205, 45 River Hills Drive. This amendment is also, this rezoning is related to Comprehensive Plan 1703. It's going from residential, single-family conventional six in the county to planned development in the city. It's going, the acreage is .35 acres. Existing use is a vacant residential lot, and it's intended to be developed for a single-family home. We have conditions of approval on the planned development zoning. This is essentially being done to be consistent with approvals that were granted previously by the county, by, through a variance that was approved by the county, so we are just trying to keep it similar to the R7 zoning as best we can. The requirements of the conditions of approval, the R, we, use, the R7 zoning district uses will be allowed per Section 12, 12-228 of the Land Development Code. The R7 regulations will apply per Section 12-506, except for the following two requirements. The courtyard setback will be 7.5 feet along Gillette Avenue. This is basically the variance that was previously approved in the county, and a lot width is slightly less than 70, 70 feet. That would be required in the R7 zoning, so we put that condition of approval. The site is south of Hillsborough River and the northeast corner of Gillette and River Hills Drive. For ours, rezoning 1705, this is 7749 Temple Terrace Highway. This is on the southwest corner of Temple Terrace Highway and north, north 78th Avenue. The zoning is going from commercial, general in the county to commercial, general in the city. It's .83 acres, and used in the existing gas station and convenience store. So essentially, we're just changing it because of an annexation which actually occurred back in 2013, but took us a little while to get this one finally rezoned. The last rezoning, RZP 1706, this is for the Tico and county property. Originally, we had included a small piece of city property in this request, but we had to withdraw it due to some issues with the legal description and the parcel numbers, so it's just going to be the county and the Tico property. County's property is at 8255 McCray Road and 1128 Davis Road. It's going from an old agricultural and commercial use that was in the county, and it's being changed to public, quasi-public in the city for approximately 124 acres. And basically, there's a electric substation, training, and some other storage on the site. The county's property, which is a preserve, the address is 9514 Woodland Ridge Drive. The zoning is PTH, which is planned development housing in the county, and it's being changed to preservation in the city. This is approximately 6.3 acres, and the use is an existing preserve, and it's going to maintain, be maintained as a preserve. be maintained as a preserve. This shows the general location. It's property, the Tico property is on the north half and the county property is the southern half under subject, where the subject site is located on the map, east of the Hillsborough River and west of Davis Road. And staff is recommending approval for all the separate ordinances for rezoning seventeen oh two through oh six. Plan commission found request consistent with the plan, with the Comprehensive Plan. And the second public hearing and reading will be November seventh, two thousand seventeen. One thing that we did add is because some of the, some of the properties include, are being done with land use changes, we've extended the, the effective date of the zoning ordinance to go in, to be in, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan date. Staff will stand for questions.
Thank you. Are there any applicants present who would like to make presentations regarding these items K through O? Seeing none, I'm going to ask council if they have any questions for staff or the applicants.
No.
Seeing none, I'm going to ask for any comments and questions from the public for all five rezonings. Ms. Kennedy, please state your name and address and you have three minutes.
John Kennedy, citizen of Temple Terrace. My primary concern is, I live right, not a mile from here. Over the weekend, we had an incident where multiple cars were broken into. Houses were vandalized. Criminal activity in this area is increasing. Police and emergency services are severely lacking and you're wanting to increase the number of people, increase the number of residents. But I'm seeing minimal improvement in police or emergency services. Now, we're overextended already. As evidenced by, when I go someplace and I see a single car pulled over with six patrol cars around it, that means six, five patrol cars are not patrolling this city. Now, the city is already overextended and doesn't have enough tax base to pay for services. So, police is what my concern is.
Just one second, Ms. Kennedy, I just want to interrupt you for a second because this
I understand what this is, I want to put this on record, okay, you're, you're interrupting me, sir.
But it's regarding rezoning and your comments should be pertinent to rezoning.
You're, you're looking at increasing, you know, population, but not increasing services. And so, you know, many of my neighbors are concerned of the lack of services in our already Temple Terrace. And you're increasing the size, but we're not increasing the services. That's my concern. And I think there's a whole lot of other citizens who decide not to show here because when they show up here, they are, you know, basically discarded. My concern and everybody else's, but before y'all, basically are thrown in the trash. Okay? Now, if I need to bring in my neighbors, I will bring them in one by one and let them address this council. But they've gotten frustrated by trying to address things that aren't addressed. So, that's my concern, I want to put that on record.
Thank you.
Thank you, these areas are already annexed and these are rezoning areas that have already been annexed into the city. Are there any of the comments from the public regarding the rezoning issues of items K through O? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance approving RZP seventeen dash zero two.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning twenty-eight parcels totaling eight five point five six acres of property located in the LAM Industrial Park and US three oh one Industrial Park addition subdivisions located west of US three oh one and south of Harney Road from Hillsborough County zoning classifications M and IPD one for interstate plan development to city light industrial, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you, if it's acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving the rezoning petition RZP seventeen dash zero two on first reading.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance approving RZP seventeen dash zero three.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning a two point three nine acre parcel of land located west of Davis Road approximately two hundred and thirty-five feet south of Navajo Avenue at one zero zero two six Davis Road, as more particularly described in section two below from Hillsborough County zoning classifications agriculture one and single-family to city R seven, single-family, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
If acceptable, entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving the rezoning petition RZP seventeen dash zero three on first reading.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is carried. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the title of an ordinance approving RZP seventeen dash zero four.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning a zero point three five acre parcel of land located at the northeast corner of River Hills Drive and Gillette Avenue, as more particularly described in section two below, from Hillsborough County zoning classification RSC for single-family six to city PD plan development, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you, if it's acceptable, entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving the rezoning petition RZP seventeen dash zero four on first reading. There's a motion, I'll second it.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion is carried. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the title of ordinance, RZP seventeen dash zero five.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning a zero point eight three acre parcel of land located at the southeast corner of Temple Terrace Highway and Seventy-Eighth Street, as more particularly described in section two below from Hillsborough County zoning classification commercial CG to city CG commercial, providing a, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you, if it's acceptable, entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving the rezoning petition RZP seventeen dash zero five on first reading.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second it, second it. If accept, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say nay. Motion is carried. I ask the city clerk to read the title of ordinance approving RZP seventeen dash zero six.
In ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, rezoning seven parcels of land totaling one hundred and eighty-seven point six one acres located on the west side of Davis Road in the vicinity of McCray Road, as more particularly described in section two below, from Hillsborough County zoning classifications agriculture planned development housing PDH and commercial C two to city public quasi-public P slash QP and preservation PRS, providing for amendment to the official zoning map of the city, providing a severability clause effective date and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict to it.
Thank you, if it's acceptable, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance approving the rezoning petition RZP seventeen dash zero six on first reading.
Move to approve RZP seventeen oh six.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion is carried. I'll let everybody know that the five ordinance will appear for a public hearing in second and final reading on Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand seventeen, in which I will not have to read them all. Thank you. All right, we have no more public hearings, we can move on to item seven, which is council business, Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club forbearance agreement, the city manager will explain.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. We're going to miss you, by the way. At our last meeting, October third meeting.
He's just moving over.
Not yet.
Our October third meeting, council meeting, a request made to, to council by the Temple Terrace Golf and Country Club requesting a ninety day extension for the purpose of developing a business plan and for the club to address the current situation of default status that we have. Prior to this request, a discussion ensued between the club and council member Prorlich and myself regarding a set of conditions that would need to be met for the ninety day extension period to be approved by city council. As a suggestion to be attached to that extension approval. At that, at the meeting, it was certainly my understanding, I think everyone else's, that the club, both the club and council had agreed to those conditions that Mr. Prorlich and myself and the club had jointly prepared. It's certainly my understanding that the board agree to those terms as well. City attorney at that point advises that the existing lease agreement could be modified to include those conditions of approval and allow a ninety day extension to the, to the club. At that point in time, I think there was discussion that, that ensued following this, that the most appropriate way to prepare this modification to the lease was through the creation of a forbearance agreement, which has been attached to the agenda this evening for council review and consideration. I don't know that I've got anything else to add to that. We have, certainly, the city attorney has done a, an excellent job of incorporating those conditions that we presented to council last meeting into this forbearance agreement and it is, now is, this afternoon. Mr. Conley may have some input, he received some, some suggested changes to that agreement that were really received about two o'clock this afternoon. So, with that, I'll ask Mr. Conley to explain some of these changes that they're proposing. It is certainly up to council to, to, whether or not to incorporate those into the forbearance agreement that is before you this evening. There are some that are problematic. There are some that I'm sure that we can work with the board on, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. So this afternoon at twelve forty-two, I received an email from Don Whittamore, president of the club, who sent back a, you know, a redlined version of the forbearance agreement where a number of proposed changes have been, have been recommended. I discussed that with Mr. Stevenson and forwarded Mr. Whittamore's email to you. In the message that I sent to you, I indicated that, you know, my principal concern was the striking of the whereas clause where the club acknowledged default and lack of defenses objections or counterclaims under the lease and loan documents. After sending the email to you, I had a discussion with Mr. Whittamore. In that discussion, I advised him that my principal concern was what I just described to you, the striking of that whereas clause. And the reason that that whereas clause is in there is that what we want to know is, as we're giving additional time to the club, that they do agree that they're in default under the terms of the, the agreements, that they don't have defenses. And essentially, that at this point in time, it's the city's grace in granting them additional time to come up with a plan that hopefully will resolve these problems and that we can modify certain terms and, and continue with a, a business relationship with the club. That my concern is, by them striking that, we don't know what their position is. Is their position that they're not in default, is their position that somehow the notice of default was improper? Do they claim to have defenses, do they claim to have counterclaims, any of that? And Mr. Whittamore said that at this point in time, given the fact that he'd been tied up with some other matters, he simply hadn't had time to really address all of those and he was concerned about entering into an agreement that included those types of concessions in them. And I'll just read to you the email that Mr. Whittamore sent to me this afternoon after we had our discussion. Mark, thanks for speaking with me today, I wanted to reiterate my explanation why I removed the language acknowledging a default and that there are no, are no counterclaims. As you know, I'm acting in the capacity of president to the club, not as its council. As such, we have no problem acknowledging the facts as the missed July and October payments under the loan, but it puts me in an untenable position to acknowledge that there is a default, that there are no defenses and that there are no counterclaims. These terms have technical legal meaning and to acknowledge them requires a legal study and analysis of all the lease and loan documents as well as the legal issues surrounding the circumstances. I have not done this and the club has not retained counsel to do so. Despite the fact that I am an attorney by profession, it would be inappropriate for me to agree to these requests without independent counsel. As I noted during our call and at the last meeting, we have no problem agreeing that the forbearance will not result in the city's waiver of any rights or remedies. I thought that was the purpose of the document and with my requested revisions, it does just that. I hope it's satisfactory to the council. So, you know, I guess if I was in Mr. Whittamore's shoes, I would probably be taking the same position that, that he is advocating on behalf of the club. What I'm suggesting to you is, if the city is going to grant a significant amount of time for the club to work on a business plan that you want to know now as opposed to finding out in December or January, if the club claims to have some argument that it's not in default or some argument that there are defenses to the default or some argument that they have some sort of counterclaim. And I, I don't think that you want to wait until January to find that out. So, I do understand, you know, with, with what Mr. Whittamore is saying, that these are issues that do require a certain amount of investigation and perhaps giving them until the next meeting for somebody to do that sort of investigation so they can feel comfortable executing a forbearance agreement that has that provision in it would, would make sense. Given what I've heard from city council, that this is something that you certainly appear to be willing to work with the club and give them some time. But I, I just think that you want to avoid any surprises in January where they might come back and assert that they're not in default or that they have defenses or a counterclaim against the city, you don't want to find that out then, you want to find that out now.
I believe we have a representative from the club here, it would be appropriate this time to see if they've represented, had anything that he wanted to address regarding this issue?
Yes, sir, I expected that someone from the club would be here to, to discuss it.
Good evening, John Nertney, representing the club, two hundred Inverness Avenue. So this was my idea, to give us all a little breathing room and to give us a chance to do with a deadline the work that we need to do. This morning, I signed the agreement with a consultant. He'll start his work within the week and have a report to us before Thanksgiving, so roughly thirty days from now. The idea was not to have a lawsuit now, not to have discovery and challenge each other's positions, that was never the idea. You mentioned significant time, Mr. Conley, I don't know if three months is significant time, given sixty years of relationships and, you know, we're, we're citizens here, we're constituents. We're here to do what's best for the city as well as the club. Nobody wants to waive rights, I think council member Ross suggested that two weeks ago. It was a good point. Nobody should waive rights, nobody should be asked to even consider what rights they're waiving at this point, that's not the idea. What's going to happen between now and January sixteenth, which is the next date we would have a report for the council, is going to work with our consultant to do market research, internal member surveys, past member surveys, a review of policies and procedures. The byproduct of this work will be a budget, capital, and marketing plan that will sustain the club and the community for the next generation. As part of this request for this time, I was asked when I met with council members individually, by more than one, it was a universal theme actually, communicate better. So we've set up weekly Friday calls. I was asked by at least two members of the I was asked by at least two members of the council to address the property tax situation. It had not been budgeted that the city, as, as you all did budget, and thank you for that, to defer the loan payments for the time being, you didn't budget to pay the property taxes on behalf. I didn't realize that early on, came to realize that. We figured out we've got prepaid dues from our members. We figured out how to raise enough funds to do that over the next several months. We started two weeks ago and I proposed a schedule. I'm impressed by y'all. That was a lot of work y'all did today. That was, that was impressive to watch and listen to and what the staff did. I told somebody that we're going to be at this for a little while and in January, we're going to have a plan that we're all going to, we're all going to be happy about and we're all going to rally around. And he said, wow, only six months after you took back over the club? That's not a long time to put this together, six months. I said, you know what? I've been told it's a very long time, but you're right, it's not. And it's not too much time for us to take to do this right. So I don't want the city to be in any worse position than it is today. I want the club and the city to be in a lot better position come January sixteenth. To that end, the consultant, as I've expressed to each of you, or some of you at least, wants to know who to talk to, whether it be the city manager and Mr. Burgorlich or some combination of all as part of his interview process. So I'd ask you to start thinking about that. And the only other issue I would ask for clarity on, which is not clear in the forbearance agreement as drafted, was the amount in agreement as to the timing and the payment of those real estate taxes.
And the one thing that I did exchange correspondence with Mr. Whittimore, he sent me the first amendment to the lease agreement. The first amendment to the lease agreement provides that the club is responsible for real estate taxes with the exception of those assessed by the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's something that going back to the agreement, I hadn't, hadn't recalled that that agreement was made with the time the lease agreement was executed back, I guess that first amendment was made sometime circa nineteen seventy-seven.
I can't hear you.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
I apologize to everyone. So for those in the back, the first amendment to the lease agreement has a provision in it that amends the lease that provides that the club will pay ad valorem taxes with the exception of that part of the ad valorem that's assessed by the city. So that is, that's part of the, that is part of the lease agreement.
Benefits of twenty years of history doing this. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. From your, I'm just commenting on, from your last, what you read from the email and apparently the, an issue with signing a document like the forbearance agreement you said is really an appropriate review by them and you believe that two weeks would be a sufficient timeframe?
You know, I, I don't know if two weeks is sufficient. All I, all I know is my recommendation to you and my, my concern. And I, my concern is not wanting to be surprised down the road. And, you know, where we have a document where payments have not been made and the document is clear that if payments are not being made, that's a basis for default. We have the city that tendered a default notice to the club a while back when payments weren't made. And I believe that the only payment that has been made since that, since that default notice was provided was five thousand dollars towards payment of ad valorem taxes. So I don't think, although I do understand Mr. Whittimore's concerns, I don't think an acknowledgement on the, on the club's part that it's in default would really take much time to consider, given the facts and given what the, what the documents provide. The issues is with regard to defenses and/or counterclaims, that might be something that would provide a little bit more time. But what I would suggest is that that would be something that the club, if they deemed that they did have defenses and/or counterclaims, that we would want to know that sooner rather than later. Perhaps if that's something that they claimed that they had defenses or they claimed they have counterclaims, that they would agree that they do, would do an investigation, that would provide that information to the city within a time certain prior to January fifteenth so that you knew at least what their position was. But these are all things that are up to you. I'm just expressing to you the concerns that I have about entering into a forbearance agreement where you have a party that's not acknowledging default and lack of defenses.
My question is, in light of the email exchange day, which apparently we haven't all gotten to know what's going on there, are we hurt anything by waiting two more weeks to give the club the appropriate time to review the forbearance agreement that's been presented to us and have it vetted? And I, I would agree with you, you shouldn't be your own attorney, just like you shouldn't do your own open heart surgery. Are we hurt by that in any way as council of the city?
No, I mean pushing, pushing back a forbearance agreement for two weeks, there, there's no prejudice there. The, the issue really is, you know, you know, what terms do you want to have in the agreement? And what points are you willing to, to give on? And reading through the agreement that Mr. Whittimore provided, some of it is just clarification of making reference to a term and that that term was defined in an agreement. And, you know, so some of the things that he put in there are not problematic. The one that jumped out at me as being the issue that gives me pause for concern is the striking of that one whereas clause.
I just want to make sure that the plan is being put into place, that we're not waiting. It sounds to me like you're doing exactly what you said you were going to do. You have a consultant, you started a marketing plan. So you're working toward this goal with or without this agreement, correct?
Yes. And I've got a one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Some of these are small, so I'll say eleven paragraph email from the consultant whose agreement I signed this morning outlining his plan for the next ten days. So this is real and again, somebody needs to organize who should meet him. But we're going to do all these things and we've begun.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Was this council's?
Well, excuse me. I don't know that we have a lot of choices here, at least not a lot of very attractive ones. I'm certainly not prepared to make a motion to approve Mr. Whittimore's amendments over the advice of our council. I think that would be a foolish motion. I mean, we have a city attorney and he's telling us that in his opinion that that clause or some equivalent of that clause should be in the, in the agreement. So I'm not, I'm not prepared to move forward with that agreement until there's more discussion that takes place. Perhaps there's a middle ground here that would be acceptable. I don't know if, if perhaps we can work out a middle ground where they acknowledge default without abandoning any future claims. I don't know if that would be acceptable to the city attorney or not. But I'm perfectly fine with giving more time. I don't know what else we can do. I'm also not comfortable in saying, heck no, we're not going to give them their extension. I mean, that, you know, we're, we want the club to succeed. If we were really, you know, hell bent on enforcing the terms of the, of the lease, we would already have taken action, which nobody's in a big hurry to do because we want this thing to work out. So, and, and truthfully, I don't think it's any secret that we're not exactly prepared for what we would do anyway. Suppose that they just decided to leave and close the place up. It's not like we have a big plan in place to go right in there. So the time really kind of necessary for us too, because we have to figure out what we're going to do. And, and to Mr. Nertney's point, the devil's always in the details. This thing started out with just give us ninety days of breathing room without us having to come here every, you know, two weeks. And conceptually, we got, we kind of said, yeah, okay, that sounds reasonable to us. But then when we got down to brass tacks and started hammering out the conditions of that, it became a little sticky. And here we are, almost feel like we're working out things that, you know, we are in some kind of litigation, which of course we're not. So I, long story short is I don't see what options we have besides to give it more time. And, and, you know, before we, we protract this thing too much, ninety days is going to be up anyway, so.
And along those lines, you know, maybe there is a middle ground. An acknowledgement of default and a rep and warranty on their part that they're not aware of any defenses or counterclaims at this time, instead of a straight out waiver of any and all, of any and all. I don't know. I, I guess what the thing, what the thing that I'd be concerned about is if in fact there is some issue that they believe that they have either, you know, defenses to the default and/or claims against the city, you don't want to find out that sometime after, after they make the presentation in January. I mean, that's not fair to the city. If that's, if that's the position, then you'd want to know that now as opposed to finding that out sometime in January, February.
As to the question of who the consultant should meet with, I can't answer that for the council. I can only address that from me. I'd like to meet with the consultant in addition to, I know we have a selected Mr. Burgorlich and Mr. Stevenson as their representatives and I have full confidence in them, but I wouldn't mind having a cup of coffee with a consultant myself either.
And I would tell you, I think he's willing, we'd be happy to meet with a greater number rather than a fewer number of you. So we could line something up that, you know, boom, 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 boom. He's coming from the east coast, so he spends limited days here.
Okay, well, don't, don't misunderstand what I said and take and leave here thinking that I demand that to see the consultant. If, if, if he doesn't want to do it that way, I mean, I'm open to discussion.
No, no, it's one of the eleven paragraphs is organize the city business.
I would like to meet.
Thank you. Mr. Nertney, I want to thank you for working very hard to try to, try to make light of everything here. My, I'll tell you what my frustration is. I feel like I'm working very hard to get information, extremely hard. You know, I represent twenty-six thousand people. And the concern I have is when I ask for financials, it took me a month to get them. And then when I got them, they're extremely incomplete. Then the club comes to us and begging for mercy for more time, and I'm all for that. But you got to work with me. You got to, you're a CFO of a very big company. You know what financials look like. Good financials. And the financials I got in June, for June, were lousy. And I'm okay to give and take, but if they were my business, that wouldn't be acceptable. And I think maybe in your business as well. I need complete financials. And if the lady at the club is very busy, I know you guys have your hands full right now, you're working very hard, then maybe we need to send folks in to get those financials and, and provide them to the council. Because I for one, hear from people in the community and they're not happy that we're supporting the club. And I try to explain to them, the club's a very important part of this city. It's part of the fabric and character of this city. But in return, I mean, I've asked for financials numerous times and you provided them to me, but they weren't complete. I mean, they, and then I talked to city manager, he said, you guys can provide July and August. Well, I want June first, complete financials, not incomplete. You know, one plus one didn't equal two. When I looked at them, I was just scratching my head saying, this can't be the financials. At the very least, maybe provide the last year or two of tax returns. That'll shed a lot of information. That's what I told Mr. Stevenson when they were going back and forth, you guys, who's paying taxes? Who's doing what? Tax returns will show that. I assume you guys file tax return. That'll show, that'll flush a lot of information out. But I just need more information. I'm willing to work with you guys. You guys got to work with me though. I don't want to ask for something. I know when I go to the bank to get a loan, they ask me for A, B and C. And if I don't give it to them, if it's incomplete, they tell me, have a nice day, we're not going to give you anything. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking for the moon. I'm just asking, I think it's a very reasonable request. And when I met with you, I said, I'm not opposed, I mean, I, we had a very good meeting. I'm not opposed to giving you ninety days. I'm the one that said, well, we didn't budget the, the property taxes and you've tried to, you know, compensate for that. And I appreciate that. We talked about the grounds and you took care of that. It's great. I mean, there was very productive discussion and reaction afterwards. But, you know, I, I left once, I, I didn't see the financial when I was there. Obviously, I just glanced at it and put it away. When I got back and over the next few days, I looked at them, I was like, there's got to be more. So, you know, I, I need a better document showing what exactly is going on. And, you know, you used an analogy the other day of, you don't want to run into, when you're building the bridge, whatever it was. And I, I don't want to take you off course here. I, I just need information. And if you can't provide it, then we can send somebody in to get it. We have, you know, folks in, in our city that can, that are willing to step up and, and, and look at that. And it can be confidential, so, you know, they look at it and you don't, we want to help you succeed, but you have to provide us the information we're looking for. That, that's, that's the only point I'm trying to make. I will strongly support your extension where it's, it's fair to both parties. There's, there's a, a middle of the road ground, I'm good with that. It's what business people do is they work together and they compromise. But at the very least, you know, I, I need some completed financials to see what we have. And I know you're in trouble, the club, not you, obviously, don't take that personal. But I need that information. And I, I need to see what you would turn in to your accountant to do your taxes. That's what I'm looking for. So if, if I can have that in a more completed type document, certainly that would put me at a little bit more comfort. And, and, and I want the club to succeed. I've said that over and over again. I don't have any other agenda, I don't have any other plan. The folks that are running it probably know it better than anybody. And I certainly want to give you guys that opportunity. But I need the information that, you know, I've, I've asked for. So that's my only hesitation and to give me a, a better comfort level. So hopefully, you know, you guys can, can provide some, something of that, of that product or the city can maybe appoint somebody to come in and, and get that information if, if you're, the staffs are overwhelmed. I mean, I know you got a lot going on and you're trying to resuscitate, you know, a, a, a situation that has been handed to you. And, and you guys are doing a good job at it. You know, nobody's kicking you. You're, you're trying. If you weren't trying, I'd be the first one to say, no, absolutely not. But I just need some, you know, the information I've asked for and, and more of a completed type document. And that, that would be, that would be my request. Thank you.
As I said to you that morning when I handed you the June financials, we're, we're behind. We had been by the end of June, back in business for a month. Lot of transition issues. We have an accounting department of one. I understand you think, well, we'll send somebody else in to help. But as anybody who's been involved in financial accounting knows, that when the auditors come in, they're not helping, they're adding burdens. That one person is going to get the financials as current as possible, as soon as possible. But that may be a month. I think I sent you an email, Mr. Stevenson, outlining a timeline that she gave me. She's going to keep the business running by billing our members and paying our bills, accounting for banquets and doing everything else that she does, one person. And she's about to take on the role of assisting the consultant with all the information he's going to need. So I understand out of the best intentions of your heart, you'd like to offer some help. It wouldn't be helpful right now. The financial statements that you're looking for don't contain the answers we need. Financial statements are a bunch of history based on how we're doing in, in the past. And we know that's not the answer. We do provide the weekly cash flow update, which I actually have a new one to share, which is a forward look of our expected collections and our expenses and paints the picture of how we can exist through this period of time that we're trying to get to. So that at the end of, of maybe thirty or forty days, you'll actually have a business plan from somebody who's in the golf industry. And, and everybody has suggested that's what we ought to be doing is looking outside our four walls, that will paint a picture for you of how the business ought to run. And hopefully attract the capital we need to make it run. So I understand defaulting to the idea of historical financials as sort of the baseline measurement of evaluating a situation. But if you know me and trust my opinion in this matter, you'll agree that that's not our primary and most important focus right now. But when the July financials get ready and the August financials get ready, you'll be the first ones to get them. the first ones to get them. And I, I, as a business owner, know where the resources ought to be devoted right now and to go in there and, and expect that this one person can take on more responsibility than we're already going to ask and do things that are, that are frankly, historical in nature versus working with this consultant in the next ten days, I'm going to, I'm going to put her to work with the consultant. So, it's not a denial, it's just a reality that we're not, it's not a push of a button. I've heard you say that before. A lot of transition issues. So, I understand it's something you feel you need. The tax returns, we have historical tax returns. I'll get you copies of the tax returns. If you think that'll help, I will absolutely do that. We'll have those to you as soon as I can figure out who has them. Thank you.
You know, obviously we have a difference of opinion on that and what I meant of pushing a button is when you turn your information into your, your accounting firms, you normally push a button to print out the statements. I certainly know what it takes to do that and I know you do as well. But the information that I have, I think, is incomplete and, I mean, it's not like we don't have a burden here. We have a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar-a-year burden that we're dealing with. And I, I think we have bent over backwards. I've always been a very strong supporter of the club. This default has been since April and we've heard that the organization is trying and, and I believe that and I believe you, I do. But the information that was presented to me just didn't make any sense. It just didn't make any sense. And, you know, I think that it would help us understand it better. We're not just some organization on the side of the street, we're the organization funding the money to run the, the club. We're funding it. So, it helps me, it helps me explain to folks in the community to say, yes, here's what's going on. And it's not a matter of to create a burden for the organization or you or anybody else there. It's a matter to shed light and I was just trying to help alleviate some of the responsibility coming up with financials and sending a, a certified accountant in there that can come up with some numbers and can say, here it is. And not burden, you guys can go on with your business and talk to the consultant and certainly we can see from the standpoint of the city where the actual numbers are. We're having a hard time and it's been discussed that we're going to go out for refinancing of our loan. And the banks will tell the city, no more interest payments. It's going to be principal and interest. They look at our finances. And I'm, again, I'll state on record, I am in support of giving the club more time. I just, that's the only information I've asked for, has been the financials. I haven't asked for anything else. So, I, I would, you know, again, my position is that it would give me a comfort level to have completed financials and, you know, we can go there and you're, you've, you mentioned June and, or July and August. Well, June would be helpful as well because the contracts are supposed to give them to us every quarter and we certainly haven't had that. I know you've had your hands full and this isn't, it's a passion you have, it's a passion that many folks in the city have as well. But we also have a responsibility to maintain our course as well. So, I think everybody up here is in, in strong support of the country club. I haven't heard anybody say, no, let's not do it, but we just need some information. Obviously, our opinions differ on that and you made that very clear, but, you know, the, the counsel knows where I stand and you certainly know where I stand. My only request has been the, the financials and, and the rest will be up to, to the other folks that sit up here.
So, can I ask just for clarity? It's not that you think I have them and I won't share them with you?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
So, you understand what I said to be true?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
John, I know you as a person, I know you as a good man. I, I know everybody in that club are good people, okay? If for one second I felt you were not telling me the truth, I would call you out on it. You've seen me in action before and I call the way I see it. I've taken an oath to represent the people of Temple Terrace and that's what I do. And if I felt there was any funny business going on, you were here when Mr. Seber was up here, right? And you saw how I dressed him because what he was doing was not right for our city. I've not treated you or anybody from the club in that manner. I respect you, your family, the club, everybody with that organization are good people. For one second if I doubted that, I would tell you to your face, John. I hope you understand that. I met with you, you asked me to meet with you. We went through everything, everything we talked about, you know, I've, I've been there. Well, I've told you, I even gave you the suggestion of the taxes. Well, maybe we can help you with the taxes, city can absorb their share. We had that discussion. I'm not reading egg from that, but I just asked for the financial, that's all I've asked for. And, and, you know, if you don't have time, I just offered that maybe we can have somebody come in and look at it. That's, that's all I said. I didn't say you weren't giving it to us, you're holding back. Please do not take that the wrong way.
No, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we, we certainly have to make a decision on, on what to do regarding this forbearance agreement. I would be in favor personally of giving the club the appropriate amount of time to go ahead and work on this and come to possibly some middle ground with the city attorney on a more acceptable wording issue where we certainly don't put ourselves and the city out for any responsibility issues or, or lack of what we have here going forward, but it's my opinion.
I would agree. I'm not sure we need a motion here. I seem, would seem to me that we could just give work direction to the city attorney to continue his discussions with Mr. Whittimore and other representatives of the club to see if we can reach an, an agreement that can be distilled into a forbearance agreement that everybody can live with.
I'm in agreement with that. Looking for an agreement to go ahead and give direction to staff to just continue working on the process.
Understood.
Good. Thank you. Still in the council business, anybody have any council business? Is there any new business? The only thing I'll say on the new business is our newly-elected mayor, yay, will take over on November seventh, yay, is here this evening. Congratulations, Mel. I don't know if you would like to say anything at this time, but since you didn't speak during the other comment time, but, okay. Again, thank you, congratulations. And we'll get the official results by the twentieth from what the clerks or the supervisor election says. I don't think it'll be much different. Any other new business? City manager's report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. To tag along with that, we will be having our new mayor sworn in on our next meeting. It is scheduled to happen at the beginning of the meeting. We're planning on swearing in our new mayor at our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting. We're planning on doing that, I believe, first, first item on the agenda so that we can get her seated. And you can scoot back over to your, your spot. Couple of things here to kind of close up here. We've got a thanks that goes out to the fire department and, and also Temple Terrace Reed's Saturday's event. I don't know how many of you attended, but it was well-attended and well-organized and well-performed. Kudos to the fire department for, once again, putting on a, a tremendous event for this community. My thanks goes out to them. This Thursday, we have a town hall meeting this Thursday at River Hills Elementary, 7:00 PM. The parking is available on the east side of the building between, between the school and the residence along West River, so just to make sure everybody knows that. I will be out of town this Friday and, and the major portion of next week. Chief Albano will take charge as acting city manager. Before you, we've got the latest edition that we've given everybody a copy of, of our playbook. Ms. Hayes and, and Greg have done a tremendous job putting this thing together. It is well-done and professionally done. I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the, the results of their efforts, so. With that, I don't have anything else that comes to mind to share with the council and the community, but I look, we look forward to continuing working with the country club, so.
I have a question, Mr. Stevenson. At the meeting before last, we had a group of citizens come to us about the issue with the pump and the pond out there and I was wondering what the latest is on that.
We have, we've had some direct conversation with our deputy director of utilities. We're looking into it. I don't know that we've gotten any resolution, but we are working on it. It is one of those things that is on the list that we continue to look at, analyze. We know that it's a problem. We're not sure what the solution is, but we're working on a couple of different ideas. I'd be more than happy to share that with you when we come up with an idea to solve the problem.
Okay, I don't want to badger you every two weeks about that. Is there the anticipated suspense date on that so we'll have some information or, or is it just we don't know exactly yet?
Well, I really don't have, I don't know that we've got a solution to the problem yet. We've got a couple of different ideas that we're trying to work through and, and cost out, so I will do my best to get you an answer as soon as I can.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Any other business to come before the council? City non, thank you very much everyone for your attendance this evening and meeting is adjourned.
I mean, I, I hope you under, most of it's just cleanup. I mean, that's all that is, it's just cleanups. Yeah, it's just process that you have to go through.
I believe she will be sworn in.
Huh?
You had to see her friend is back. Mr. King is...
Yeah. He worries me.